Good evening. As First Vice Chair of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the February 18th, 2020 Regular Meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now Ms. Paguado will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden a esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 18 de febrero del 2020. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes de reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie su teléfono celular o dispositivo de comunicación y absténgase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestra capacidad de grabación. Nos complace que se hayan tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos las gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, I believe we are beginning with a presentation. Alrighty, I'm gonna pass the torch over to the Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Do want to just call our Assistant Principal Harding to join us. As you know, we want to be intentional about highlighting the great work that is happening in our schools. And we have Assistant Principal Harding from Milner Middle School today that is going to share some great work that the team is doing with our students specifically as they celebrate our Black History Month. So I will turn it over to Assistant Principal Harding.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent and Board of Ed members. I'm so happy to be here tonight to just share with you the work that we're doing at Milner Middle School in honor of Black History Month. Just to share with you our structure at Milner Middle School, we have a 30-minute advisory period every morning in which students engage in a multitude of learning opportunities. And we've dedicated half of January and all of February to learning specific themes in Black History. And while Black History is celebrated throughout our school all year, February is a special time to highlight the achievements and accomplishments of Blacks in America and worldwide. So what we have is a PowerPoint presentation that gives you a kind of a snippet of the different activities that students are doing day to day. And it is rather long, so if it's going too long, feel free to stop it because I think it's about 10 minutes long. So I will have you start.
Okay. Thank you for that. I hope, I don't think I see them around, but I hope our media, the selective reporting media, covers the wonderful work that is happening down at Milner. Thank you for everything that you are all doing. That was beautiful, so thank you. Alrighty, I will move on. Public comment is next on the agenda. I believe I am passing the mic over to Ms. Taylor.
We, as a Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously. And to that end, we have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take down your information. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now Ms. Paguado will read this in Spanish.
En traducción del comentario público. Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se hayan tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esta persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándoles saber que queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Michael Downs. Good evening, Board members. And Superintendent, Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. If you want your ideas heard, the best thing to do is run for public office, even if you lose. I've run for mayor five times since 1975. I've always had my ideas brought up somewhere along the line. This past week, Senator Douglas McCrory brought up a proposal to the State Senate for enhancing the number of minority teachers, especially African-American and Puerto Rican male teachers. Hartford News had an article by Ann Gostigian, a longtime writer for that paper, and a weekly attendant at all of the Hartford City Council meetings. And she called for the return of vocational technical education in the Hartford Public Schools, libraries, special ed, clubs and activities such as band, science, newspaper. Kids used to write articles, nice articles in the newspapers concerning science and music and art and all sorts of literature. And efforts in these areas can go a long way to, or even a short way, help in student safety, which was an issue recently in the Hartford Public Schools right here in Weaver. And being as this is the district school from where I live, I'm concerned about that. And I also came up in the past couple of days recently, whether I heard it today or yesterday, I can't remember, but Hartford, they ranked the state capitals. And Hartford is 46th out of the 50 state capitals in areas of education and poverty, among other things. And I'm not here to scold the Board or the Superintendent. It's not your fault. But when I ran for mayor this last time, I pointed out some of the problems. And without getting too tough on our suburban neighbors, I would just say they need to do more to bring money into the cities. Thank you.
Kyle Ederson.
Good evening. Superintendent, Chairman Hernandez, other members of the Board of Education, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today, this evening. It is a pleasure to be back in this building. Being a graduate of 1980 feels really warm. Somebody's giving me a whistle. Being really warm to be back in this building. It is very beautiful. In addition to that, I'm also a graduate of Clarence A. Barber School, which was Thurman Milner, which is Thurman Milner. So today's a good, just reminiscing about my good old days running both of those hallways. But the reason why I sit before you today is I can share an opportunity. Doc Hurley, who was administrator at this university, sent me down to his alma mater, Virginia State University. And a few of alumni from Virginia State, we're bringing up Virginia State Gospel Choir to Connecticut and Rhode Island. And on March the 6th, we're gonna be having a community concert at First Cathedral Church. But during the day, for two days, we'll be visiting about nine different schools. And what they like to do, the Gospel Choir, is they have a curriculum about having music, music education, voice, and band scholarship. And they'll be sharing this with students throughout the district, Manchester, Bloomfield, Windsor, when they go to Rhode Island and other places. We have connected with Principal Richardson here, so we're looking to do some things here with hopefully partnering with Hartford Public High School and with Buckley during the day. Here's my ask. The ask is very simply, we would like to donate 100 tickets for the evening concert at First Cathedral School. First Cathedral is a little bigger than this building, and we would like for it to be full. And we'd like for it to have students and parents. So we're saying that if we would donate 100 maybe plus tickets to the school, to the district, if you guys can get them in there, we'll have them be our guests for the evening. Very simple. I know it's easy said than done, but at least there's an opportunity, and we're looking to partner. So we have raised about 80% of our budget to make it happen, so we're feeling very comfortable there. Now it's about putting seats, putting body in the seats and making a very successful appearance. So that's my ask. Thank you for my time and hope I don't get the ding. And I'll talk to Dr. Burke after this is over. She's shaking her head, yes, okay, good thing. Thank you very much.
Kyra Brown. Good evening, Board members. So I am here today. I have a child that attends MD Fox RISE program. Back in September, my child was provided a slot to go to Capital Prep School. I immediately called for a PPT, and I was told that my child needed an 80% in order to attend Capital Prep. At that point in time, I asked for documentation. I am here because I am concerned about that program. I am, and the reason why I'm concerned is because students are being suspended without the parent's knowledge. They're asked simply could the child be kept home? Teachers are leaving the classroom. It's supposed to be two teachers in the classroom, a parent and a regular special ed kid, I mean special ed teacher. And admittedly, both staff and the parent has said that there's only one person in the classroom. If this is supposed to be a said behavioral program, then there should be, students should be monitored at all times. Anytime I ask for said documentation for these rules, there aren't any. Where's the handbook? We use MD Fox regular handbook. The handbook doesn't have anything in it that addresses any of these issues. When you bring it up the ladder, nobody contacts you. I had to start recording PPTs because we're on the hamster wheel with the same issues. When you ask questions, they say, oh, we're surprised you even showed up to a PPT. That's unacceptable. Yes, yes, yes. I'm a very active parent. I'm gonna advocate for my kid. I'm gonna advocate for other parents. I'm gonna teach them how to advocate for their kids. I read the IUPs, and when I tell them, you know, I'm reading this stuff, and this is incorrect. My child just had his triennial, and the testing on there, it was recommended that he get tested for ADHD. And I said, he has a narrow psych from 2017 that says he has ADHD. Why are we going through the same things? So I just would like somebody to look into the school and also some documentation that stating that a child needs 80% in order to be transitioned into a regular education school. You know, for me, my child has been mainstreamed into the math class where he's getting over 90%, but he still has to go back to the RISE program. So I'm just stuck, and I'm coming to you guys for help, but really asking that somebody looks into that school because kids are just sitting there where they could be achieving their dreams and achieving their goals and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Jackson.
Hi, my name is Tamara Jackson. I am the parent of two children that attend West Middle School. I'm also the PTO president and I'm the head chair of the SGC at my kid's school. I come from a Windsor school system background. I had my kids when I was young, so everything in the Hartford school system is just very new to me. As a parent, there's so many things I do right and there's so many things I do wrong. And one of the number one things that I know for a fact I'm doing wrong is continuing to allow my kids to get an education from the Hartford Public School system. I feel so completely bad for their teachers. I bring them gift baskets all the time because I could just never do it. There is no support for your staff members at all. There's a high behavior problem in that school like many other Hartford public schools, but for some strange reason, we have large classroom sizes and then you don't have another adult in the classroom to help manage the teacher. So now the teacher has to deal with the behavior of a child and also has to then educate the rest of the students. Myself, I had to move my daughter out of a classroom with a teacher that she loved simply because she told me that she's too scared to learn in class. Her grades were permitting, she wasn't focused on reading, but when I would take her to her reading coach, it would be fine. She was too scared to learn because she had to watch him and then try somehow to focus on class. I don't think you guys properly support your teachers at all. During the SGC meeting, we were given what was considered a report card for our school. And if the school was my child, they would get a beating and they would not be able to do anything. We received a grade of a 58.1. I think that's so ridiculous. I looked at the grade of my old elementary school and they received a 96. The Hartford school system is, I feel like we're setting our kids up for failure. We have our, my third graders from last year, when I looked at the reports, they were passing with only 20% of the students. That's completely ridiculous. I don't know no other job that you can go to and 20, you only doing 20% and you can pass. I come from a restaurant background. If the Hartford Public School system was a restaurant, you guys would have an F. It would be considered disgusting for anybody to eat there. You would fail all of your health codes if you guys go a restaurant. It's so disheartening to know that as a parent, I send my kids to school every day and I didn't have to turn around and pay somebody else to do reading and to help my child succeed. And if I don't do these things, then my daughter is gonna fall behind and my son's gonna fall behind. What about all the other parents who don't have access to the tools that I have access to? Their kids are just gonna forever be struggling, and it's not fair. And people always talk about how the crime rate is so high and this and that, and it's like, what are we doing at the educational level to somehow try and fix this? It's not fair at all. It's not fair. We are setting our kids up to go to jail. We have third graders that don't know how to read. We have first graders that don't know letters, don't know anything. It's not fair at all. You guys are completely setting these kids up to go to jail. I have teachers that are doing standardized tests. My teacher has to sit and do a 30-minute test on my child and still focus on the whole rest of her class. How do I know that my child's scores are even accurate? Because the teacher has to do the test on my child and do everything else. You have to do 30 minutes per child. For, there's 24 kids in my teacher's class. That's 12 hours on just one test. That's 12 hours that she's taking away from everything else that she could be doing. My child can't even ask questions in class because of the fact that the teacher is outside testing, and we have like 10 tests a year that we have to do. It's ridiculous. I feel like you guys are not doing your job at all. I need some sort of revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Farkason.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. My name is Jason Farkason, proud Weaver alum, graduate class of 1999. I'm looking to see how someone can provide a construction update for the field house and the pool and MLK. As you know, I'm not a fan of the Hartford School Building Committee because they're neat at 12 noon, middle of the day, that doesn't allow for community or parents to attend and ask questions about their school. I'm always gonna come back and push and find a way to change some legislation so that it can be moved to a later evening, maybe 3 o'clock, so people could make some adjustments. Also, dealing with construction, in Weaver here, there are some outlets for wheelchair accessibility up front and at the top. It's not marked, so it's an easy tripping hazard. Someone early today tripped in the front row here, so just some regular yellow or black tape to designate where the wheelchair slots will be so people can see that. Regarding Weaver, I would like to know how many AP classes are available for our students and when will Weaver either match the number of AP classes that Buckley has or surpass it? What's the plan to do that so that Weaver can be comparable, comprehensive high school going forward? It'd be nice to know what that plan looks like and what's the... It'd be nice to know what that plan looks like, and what's the goal to get to that number, if there is a number? Let's see. Regarding Weaver and Cincella, after talking to Cincella and Weaver students, being in separate classes, they are talking about the ratio of student to teacher. Cincella kids are saying that it's 15 to 1. Weaver kids are saying that it's not a 15 to 1 ratio, that there's a lot of kids in their classroom. And I think some students can mirror or echo what the young woman said earlier about having to manage a large classroom size. Let's see here. Weaver memorabilia, there was a lot when the school was open. I walked the halls. I don't see this lot of, before, I know that, I don't wanna call anybody out, but I know Craig was very adamant of trophy cases and showing a lot of Weaver memorabilia. I don't know where those banners are, I don't know where the trophies are, I don't know where the historic photos are that talks about the history of Weaver, starting from Ridgefield Street, which is MLK to now. It'd be nice to showcase that history. Is anybody in charge of getting the memorabilia out of storage? Is anyone in charge of making sure it's placed throughout the school? What are we doing to get that air? Because it still looks like a brand-new school that doesn't have an identity. And lastly, part of the Weaver's third community, we stress the idea about having strong, true corporate sponsors to help support the academic programs. We all knew that Travelers was a corporate sponsor from the beginning. Who is managing the corporate sponsors for all the educational programs? They should be here, they should have questions about whether or not their dollars or their volunteers are actually having access to do the work that needs to be done here. So again, who's managing these things? It'd be nice to know how we're doing these things. And again, I'm OSHA 10 certified, so I would like to do a walkthrough in the fieldhouse, the pool, and a walkthrough of the MLK construction site. I'm, we're sitting right behind Michael Dow, so if anybody could walk over and let me know how we can schedule that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Wilson?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna leave real quick, as quick as I can be. Just to piggyback off of what, something that Jason said about the class sizes, the class sizes at Weaver are a problem, right? Weaver's class sizes are 30-plus per class size versus Cincella, that is, you know, 15 to 1, right? So that is a major problem. I think part of that problem was, the expectation was that we weren't going to have as many students at Weaver as we do. We kinda warned you guys about that, but it is what it is. But specifically, when it comes to Weaver, I wanna talk about the radio station, the TV station, and what we are, what are we doing with those programs? Today, if my son were to attend Weaver, he would not have access to the TV station, he would not have access to the radio station. These are core programs on the JMA side, the journalism and media part of Weaver, and those programs, who, where's the curriculum? Who's teaching them? Last I checked, I believe there was a rec out there for someone to come in and teach those courses, but what is, what is being taught? What is the actual curriculum? So I'd like somebody to get, kinda, let me know what the, what the curriculum, plan for the curriculum is. Same thing with the TV station. Jason talked about partnerships. What partnerships are we, radio as well, but what partnerships are we, do we have for these programs, right? So these kids can expand outside of the school. I mean, there's plenty that they can do in the school as a part of the curriculum, you know, tape football games, report on these football games, sporting events, different stage shows and stuff like that. But outside of that, what are some of the partnerships? Jason spoke about the NAFTA partnerships. Where is that today? I have not, I know that Tara Spain was one of the people, representatives from Travelers, not heard from her in quite some while. Who is in charge? I know there was a rec as well out for someone to come in and kinda oversee all of the partnerships that Weaver has. Was someone hired? What is the plan moving forward? We need more than just Travelers in building for partnerships. We could, for, especially with communications, we could reach out to CSB, public access. University of Hartford is a host of things that we could be doing, but I just don't see happening. So if I'm a parent and I'm sending my kid to Weaver for journalism and media, or I'm sending my kid to Weaver for business, those programs are not there for the kids to take advantage of, and that's a problem. And it's a misrepresentation of the school. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Caroline Merton?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not always called Caroline. I didn't know it was me. Thank you very much for having this opportunity. I'd much rather be doing something else, but I'm here because I'm concerned about the safety of our children. I'm not here to beg, I'm not here to ask, but I'm here to say to the administration, we need to make this school safe before our fears become a reality. How that can be done is if you can't do it, to let the community do it. By posting community police officers at this school, installing entrance and other electronic security checks. Mandatory student ID badges, which are not being done now. No loitering anywhere on the school grounds. Mandatory counseling in-school and outside services. Or transfer the students who are 21 and over, rather than expelling them and putting them on the streets, put them in military school. We don't have a military school, let's build some. We need our kids to be safe. And then we need more parental involvement in what's going on with our children. If we don't do something better than what we are doing, we are going to be crying, we are gonna be marching, we're gonna be doing, it makes no sense for a school of this kind and any school in this city to not have security. Both electronic and manpower. So we need to take a look at that. And I wanted to come here tonight first because I know the importance of priority and being respectful. I wanted to come to the, to the school board first before I go into any place else in this community. Most of you know me, you know my name if you don't know my, my face. I believe in getting things done. I volunteered in this city ever since I came here from Florida, and I'm continuing, I live right up the streets from this school. I would hate, it boggles my mind, I'm 82 years old, I'm not five years old, I've been around a long time. We can do better. Our children deserve better. Our teenagers are petrified. We are running a youth program right now where all they are talking about is safety and life, and they shouldn't have to live like that. They should not have to live like that. We can do better. We can find money for everything else, let's find money for safety in our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is the election of officers. The Board of Education conducts its annual organizational meeting every February. This is a process when officers are elected, and we use paper ballots for each office. The nominations will be made, the candidate's name will be listed on the ballot, and each member will sign the form. Ms., I think it's Ms. Dorfman now, right? Now, Ms. M. Ten. Oh, there you go. Alrighty. Will collect the paper ballots and will inform us of the results. After that, Attorney Mesrak will, Assistant Corporation Counsel will proceed with the oath of office. Just a question for clarity, do you want to administer the oath individually or as a group? No, that is fine with me. Nope. Individually it will be. Awesome. We will proceed with the election of officers, beginning with Board Chair. I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Chair. Are there any nominations?
There are.
Ms. Brody, please.
I nominate Ayesha Clark.
Mrs. Clark, do you accept the nomination?
Second.
Doesn't say second, though.
Second.
Second has been made. Ms. Mrs. Clark, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for, for the Office of Chair of the Board? Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Chair of the Board? Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Chair?
Yes. Mr. Flores, who do?
Okay. So there, Mr. Flores is not here whether, he's not here to accept the nomination, so I'm not sure how to move on from that one. Do we not consider that? He, the advice is that he should be present, so we will strike that recommendation. Having heard no other nominations, I now close the nominations for Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes, and that one is the pink, the first one on top. We will just wait for the tally. Alrighty, I believe, considering we only have one candidate, it is my pleasure to congratulate Mrs. Ayesha Clark as the new Chair of the Board of Education, so round of applause for her. Can you please stand and receive the oath, please? Oh yes, you can clap. You gotta come over here, you are taking over. You want me to keep you? All right. I will be switching, I will be moving away. Thank you.
I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Vice Chair.
I have a nomination.
Ms. Brody?
I nominate Karen Taylor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Karen Taylor, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Vice Chair of the Board?
I do. Mr. Juan Hernandez?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hernandez, do you accept the nomination?
I do not.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Vice Board Chair? Are there any other nominations on the floor for Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Vice Chair of the Board? Having heard none, I will now close the nominations of the Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. You may do so by using the lavender-colored form. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Taylor. I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Second Vice Chair.
I nominate Kimberly Oliver.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Oliver, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Second Vice Chair of the Board? Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Second Vice Chair of the Board? Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Second Vice Chair on the Board? Having heard none, I will now close the nominations for Second Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Secretary. Thanks, Juan. Juan is trying to make us go along, but we gotta make sure they officially do it. She's good. Congratulations to Kim Oliver. Congratulations. I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Secretary.
I have a nomination. Shante Brody.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Brody, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Second Vice Chair of the Board? Excuse me. Of the, are there any additional nominations on the floor for Board Secretary? Are there any additional nominations on the floor for Board Secretary? Are there any additional nominations on the floor for the Board Secretary? Having heard none, I will now close the nominations for Secretary of the Board. Please cast your votes. Congratulations, Ms. Brody. Congratulations. Can all newly-elected officers please stand to have a picture from our Communications Director, please? Congratulations to all again. We will now move on to committee reports. There will be no report from the Chair. There will be a report from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items that I want to report. As you all know, the Superintendent's report will be added to board docs. I do want to take the opportunity to just lift some updates regarding the district model of excellence, specifically to some of the questions around constructions. And so, with regard to the Weaver renovations, the academic wing is complete. The auditorium, as we all know, was already completed back in November. The gymnasium will be completed at the end of this month, February. The pool is expected to be completed by June. The site work for all of the fields will begin as soon as the weather allows. And there is a new water retention under the soccer field has been designed and will be incorporated into the project so that it can prevent any flooding into that lower level of the pool mechanical room. And as we know, the entire Weaver project completion is expected to be this upcoming July. The other project that we're working diligently on and making sure that it stays on track is the Martin Luther King Building renovation. The installation of the windows will take place early March. The casework is going on now on the second and the third floors with drywall being installed in, on the first floor. The academic wing is scheduled to be completed by the end of July to allow for all the furniture, the fixtures, and the equipment to be delivered and installed in early August. And so, we know that it's going to be cutting it very close. However, we expect both student and staff occupancy to take place in August so that we can begin the academic school year at Martin Luther King and at Breakthrough. With regard to other facility updates, we at Central Office, the Board of Education, is going to relocate. The, all of the abatement and demolition has been completed on the fourth floor of Buckley High School, which is where our offices are going to be located. The general contractor, construction manager contract was already awarded, and the renovation for the fourth floor is scheduled to be completed at the end of July. The logistics will be developed during this upcoming month in March. And just this past Friday, Central Office had its town hall meeting where we reviewed the project design, and we had the architects over to answer questions about our move and our relocation. A few other updates that I will remind us. One is with regard to Global. As you know, there was, you know, a lot of commentary as to the move to Global and the co-location of Adult Ed into Global. And we did have a meeting with Global PTO representatives and SGCs where we collect, and my entire team, we collectively walked through the building to identify areas of concern, and we're going to continue to address the safety concerns that were raised. A walkthrough has been conducted with the Fire Marshal, and the Fire Marshal's office has provided a list to us of objectives that we have to meet, such as installation of doors that will separate the Adult Ed program from the rest of the building. And so, we continue to work collaboratively on all of those. And then, other reconfigurations, just as a reminder, again, I will submit this report not only to the Board, but also have it available to our community. Just other reconfigurations happening at the end of this year. Burr will reconfigure from a pre-K eight to a six-eight middle school, and it's a co-location with Betanta STEM. Global will have a reconfiguration to a, from a pre-K twelve to a pre-K eight, and will co-locate with Adult Ed and the pre-K Magnet. And the other schools that are going to reconfigure from a pre-K eight to a pre-K phi are both Naylor and West Middle. There are two buildings that are scheduled to close completely, and that is the Adult Ed and Renzulli Building that is currently on 110 Washington, and of course, the pre-K Magnet, which is on Cornwall Street. Both of those two scheduled to close fully in July. And for us, as you know, it, oh, and Breakthrough Magnet, which is the Twain, the Mark Twain Building, is also going to close after MLK relocates to its new facility. And then, two leases that are scheduled to be terminated sometime in the summer. It's going to be our lease at Central Office and the parking lease that we have that goes along with that. So, just wanted to remind us that there's still a lot of work to be done, and we continue to work with our team on just increasing and improving the communications with all of our communities, given that, you know, as you all know, it was three years ago that these votes and the decision was made, and, you know, there are times in which families either leave the school, some new families come in, and so, it's important for us to continue to communicate regularly as to all of the shifts. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next on the agenda is our student report, a student report. We don't have a student present. All other committee reports you can find online, and they will be posted there. Next on our agenda is the business agenda, five point one. The recommended action is that, is that a motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to amend the contract with Salient Health to the new amount of nine hundred thousand for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2020. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please use your computers or vote out loud. Computers are working, so. Do it verbatim, okay. All those who are aye, please state.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving to agenda item five point two. To motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to amend the contract with Delta T Group to the new amount of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2020. Is there a second?
Still moved.
We're on five point three. That was five point three. Thank you, Kim. That's, yeah, we'll, we'll go to five point three, we'll come back to five point two. Is there a second? We went to five point three, we missed five point two. My pardon.
So, I second.
The five point one, yeah, we're good. Yeah, we're good. Yep. Thank you. Here in a second. Is there, all ayes stated, please? Oh, is there a discussion, I'm sorry.
Ms. Madam Chair.
Ms. Oliver?
I just want to point out that when this contract came to the Finance Committee, we did vet it with the team, and the teams discussed group clauses and some other issues in terms of workforce and staffing challenges as it relates to paraprofessionals. And so, as a result, what the staff did was amend the request to the ninety-eight nine so that we will be able to make sure we're able to pay our bills and keep that moving with Delta T. But we did ask some questions, and so, I just want to give a heads up to my colleagues that we will likely see this again, but we're going to get some additional information as to, there's been multiple resignations, and there's also just an overall market issue that's going on with paras as well. But we did ask some questions, so this will be coming around again, just as a heads up.
Are there any other questions? I actually have just a quick question on this one. Is there any information with regards to maintaining the paras to be within the Delta T with the turnover rate? If this is going to come back, I just want to know if we're doing anything to sustain them from coming back. The Delta T paras, do they provide us? I'll ask Dr. Sellers about that. I'm not sure if there's a turnover from Delta T. I think that's what you're asking.
Alright, good evening. I just want to make sure I understand the question. Can you state it one more time?
So, the question is, Ms. Oliver stated that there will be, this will come again due to turnover rate with Delta T. And so, my concern is that if there is a continual turnover rate, is this a contract that we should be pursuing because it will come back again, or is this, are we doing something to maintain the stability of what's going on?
So, the stability, so we're trying to do, to maintain the stability of our current in-district roster of paras. So, were you asking about the stability of the Delta T paras, though?
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, just to clarify, it's our turnover rate with Hartford Public Schools, and so, Delta T are like substitutes, if you will, for paras. I'm not sure if we're using the right techno.
Right. There's, other districts are experiencing shortages in para educator staff. Delta T even experiences shortages in para educator staff, so.
That clarifies it. I just wanted to understand if it was our internal or if it was somewhere else, and if it's somewhere else, are we doing what we need to do to ensure that this contract is not something that we're continuing to do, knowing that there's a turnover rate? So, the clarity is there, thank you.
Okay, great.
Can I add?
Ms. Brody?
So, some of the conversation that also was discussed, that there would be an upcoming conversation with the paras union in regards to recruitment shortages, just a conversation with them. So, that was sort of what Ms. Oliver was mentioning before we go to approve for over two hundred thousand. We're like, okay, can we just get through the end of the school year and find out exactly what's going on? It was a lot of concern around the amount of resignations. So, we were asking for a report back to describe what we're going through and why, and then the conversations with, with the para union, to know where we go from there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those who are aye? Please state.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? It's okay. You can do it verbatim if you want. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to five point two. The recommended action, motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to amend the contract with Sunbelt Staffing to the new amount of a hundred thousand for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2020.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair. Again, some of us have been part of these other conversations as, as it relates to our specialized staffing, and the decrease allows us to have the increase in the former agenda item. So, the concept was that the school system would be working with several different vendors, and would be balancing out those numbers so that our total up against our budget remains the same. So, I just wanted to give that reminder to everyone. So, it was no increase overall to the actual budget.
Are there any other questions?
Actually, I do have a comment, though.
Ms. Stallings?
This has just been a uphill battle for a long time, a long, long time. And I just want to make comment, because some people might see the high astronomical prices. I agree with it, but this, this is a necessary item, necessary, I don't want to call it necessarily evil, but this is something that the Superintendent has been fighting and trying to rectify for a while. So, I just want to acknowledge and thank you all for the hard work in getting through this annual roadblock or, that's it, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Please accept it by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to five point four. A motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to amend the contract with Mediscan two to the new amount of seven, seven, sorry, it's a, seventy thousand, seven hundred, excuse me, seventy thousand for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Taylor?
Not specific discussion, but I would love to hear a little bit more if there's additional background on the shortage of the schools, psychologists and how that impacts on the ground within our schools' system.
Superintendent?
Yes, just to give you some additional context, so we had contracted in September due to school psychologists for three days a week to supplement the current roster that we have for school psychologists due to a combination of retirements, medical leaves and vacancies. And so, we needed to modify the contract so that we can add an additional two days per week. That gives us a total of the five days per week, given that we have additional pending psychological evaluations that we have to do. I do want to take the opportunity to kind of do some forecasting, given that our efforts will continue, even though we have, we continue our efforts to recruit school psychologists, we know that we're going to have some that are going to be retiring in the near future. And so, it's going to continue to present a challenge for us, knowing that it's not just Hartford Public Schools that is in the process of recruiting, we have other districts that are in the same situation as well. And so, the increase in the days allows us to have three days per week for evaluations, and then the other two days for some, the psychologists to attend PPTs and to actually do some of the report writing. We currently have live two point eight vacancies for school psychologists and two are medical leave. And so, you know, this allows us to have the additional support that is needed.
Thank you, Superintendent, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to five point five. The recommended motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with CROCK Leadership Associates for determining the contract not to exceed seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty, ending in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions? Superintendent, I actually would like to have a little background on this one, please.
So, this is part of our work with the Barr Foundation. This is the second grant that we have received from the Barr Foundation. If you recall, the first grant that we received was to do work with EY Parthenon around digging deep into our data for post-secondary success. We wanted to know what the graduating class of two thousand and sixteen, which was when we did the data dive, those were students that were in their second year of college. We wanted to know their persistence in college and then identify the early warning indicators, looking back to middle school, for students that, we wanted to find the formula, if you will, for students to stay on track, graduate on time, and then persist through the second year of college. So, that was the first phase of the work. Barr Foundation then had another RFP, and it was to then create an action plan in response to the data findings that we had. And so, Barbara CROCK or CROCK Leadership Associates is the consultant that we used the first time and then this second time around to help us develop, actualize the action plan, which entails the development of the Portrait of a Graduate, which is work that entails engagement internally, led by teachers, teacher leaders, and then also with higher ed and our community-based providers and industry. And so, she's kind of facilitating all of that work for us. And as you see there, it is funded through the Barr Foundation grant.
Are there any other discussions?
Just one quick question, is this data that they're going to be collecting, is it going to be ours, maintained with us, or is it going to go anywhere else?
As part of this second phase, there is no data collection, but the first phase that they collected data is our data, it was our data that they mined for us?
Thank you. Seeing no discussions, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item five point six. This is the first reading of the proposed two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school calendar. There is no vote at this time for the first reading of this, are there any discussions or questions on this?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the staff that was really thoughtful in working on this in order to be able to kind of sync up the calendars throughout greater Hartford. We have a lot of different systems at our disposal here. And so, the thoughtfulness that went into even reducing some of our chronic absenteeism by looking at, you know, the dip days and just giving students off like Columbus Day or other holidays, I think it was really thoughtful in the ways in which the staff approached it. So, I wanted to give kudos to Dr. McGroan, who came in and spoke within our meeting, and Dr. Vasquez, who've also worked on this calendar to do this for our students and for our district.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none? We can move on to the business item five point seven, which is the second reading and adoption of the Students five oh four ADA policy. The recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the policy five one seven four, five oh fourth dash ADA. Is there a motion?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second, are there any questions or debates on the floor? Mrs. Taylor? Ms. Taylor?
If at all possible, if it's, can we have a little bit of context on this in regards to the revisions, like why they were necessary? Is this something that is done in order to be in alignment with some sort of modified state statute? Or was it, I know that this is a model policy that we have here, so just wondering, I guess, what we originally had on the books for this policy and what the revisions are that we're speaking to this evening?
It did require that we calibrate with what the state changes were, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vasquez Matos.
It's kind of difficult to hear, we're still on the five point seven, correct?
Five point seven.
Yes.
So, this is actually following statutory language that has changed over the summer months, and the policy that's in front of you is actually the model policy that has been redlined and aligned with the guided policy that has provided by our attorneys from Shipman and Goodwin to align with the statutory and federal regulations that are required for school districts.
Ms. Taylor?
And, Dr. Vasquez Matos, is this policy something that we are now adding to our policies? Or is it something that is replacing that, and I know I'm on this committee, but I just, I don't remember seeing this come across. Is this a replacement of something that's already on the books?
So, some of this language is already in our policy, there are certain additions here that are added that are new to the current existing policy.
Okay, so when we do have revisions that are significant enough in order to get rid of the old one, is there a process by which we go through in order to extricate that policy from?
Yeah, so what we take is actually the current policy, and we kind of do kind of a red line or even red and blue line, depending on how many revisions. And you can actually, for this policy, you can see, you can track actually what is underlined, is the added language, or what you could see as a strike through is prior language that has been taken out and updated with the current language to align with statutory language that has been revised. So, you can actually track the changes, additions or deletions of existing policies.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's throwing me is just that it's a Shipman and Goodwin model policy, so I was wondering if we were replacing it, but I think I see what, I'm following now.
Right, so our series is five, if we go, if anyone was to go to our policies, you will see the exact series of five thousand, which is kind of the guidance that we've been following for the past several years, even before my time, so it kind of mirrors the same series. So, the five thousands is actually students, so anything statutory or policy related that falls into five thousands reflects students.
Thank you, I have additional inquiries, but I'll take them offline, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez, are there any other questions or discussions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving to business agenda item five point eight. This is the second reading and adoption of the School Governance Council's policy. The recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts policy one two one one, School Governance Council. Is there a motion to accept it?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second, are there any discussions or debates about the motion on the floor? Ms. Taylor?
Additionally, you know, this is policy, this is my thing, so additionally, I'm wondering if we'd be able to have just a tad bit of context from a board liaison to be able to talk to this particular policy that is going to be accepted for adoption, just because it's been in the hopper for so long around school governance councils, and it has so much impact on our students and families.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, are there any other discussions or debates? Ms. Brody?
So, just so I'm clear, nothing, all of the things that were in question and discussed is not up for change. This appears to be just a couple minor changes. Yeah, so all, there was a lot of discussion, and I think it actually came through a couple committees. But none of those items in particular were, are being dealt with here. But this seems, is some stuff that changed maybe at the legislator that we're required to change in our policy.
That is correct.
And then I just have a quick question, so just to piggyback off of Ms. Brody. The, this has gone from the policy to, back to the family and community engagement, back to policy. And we just had a couple of things that we wanted to address within there. So, just so that I can have clarity, that information, I just quickly looked through prior to, after leadership, was to look to see if that information was in here, the questions that we had, and that stuff is presented here with respect to term limits and things of that nature.
Correct, thank you so much. Are there any other discussions or debates? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions? Seeing no other, the motion carries. Moving to agenda item five point nine, which is the second reading and adoption of, against the smoking policy. The recommendation is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts a policy four one one eight point three one. Excuse me, the one that's popping up. The recommended action is the Hartford Board of Education adopts policy five one three six. And it's the prohibition against smoking, is there a second?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second, is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all can signify the answer by stating aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion has carried. Moving to agenda item five point ten, which is the second reading and adoption of sexual harassment. The recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts policy four one one eight point three one, sexual harassment. Is there a motion on this policy?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second, are there any questions or debate on the floor? Seeing none, for all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are not in favor signify by stating nay. Are there any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to take up the consent agenda as one item?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moving properly second, that the consent agenda will be taken up as a whole. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none? The consent agenda will be taken up as a whole. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I do apologize to everyone, I am messing up tonight. But with the consent agenda being taken up and though, please, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as all together? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Is there a motion on the floor to, for closing?
Do we have to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you for the clarity. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as taken up as a whole?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been properly second, approved and seconded, are there any questions or debates? Seeing none, the agenda, consent agenda has been taken up and approved as a whole. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, do we have to vote for the passing of the consent agenda? Yeah.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has properly been approved and seconded, are there any discussions or debate for the adjournment of the meeting? Seeing none? All those in, all those in favor for closing the, of the adjournment of the meeting, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
The meeting has been adjourned. I will say thank you all for bearing with me, I lost every word that I could possibly know on how to conduct a meeting. So, thank you all for dealing with me through that process.